Our nation to remember, you will help us never to take our freedom for granted. I ask you all that you help us in this meeting to make the wise decisions for our town. Help us for to do things according to your will, for we pray this from Jesus.
Amen.
Welcome everybody. One of the proud that you do it. Thank you for having an interest in your town and being responsible citizens and being informed. We hope that tonight that you will participate when you can and also express your achievements. And again, thank you very much for our attention. At this time, we'll have roll call.
Sabrina Doray present.
Number four, person. Town deputy president.
Robert Gordon here. Dominic Proctor here.
Full representation of our council. Next order upon our agenda is approval of our minutes. However, I do know that there are a couple of items that, and I read on earlier, on first page, works with Rick Spelling of Alderman Bets name. And also, I recognize Ms. Kathleen Stevens that says Mr. Steven Green. And I don't need to repeat Ms. Kathleen Stevens on that. And for anybody else can note any changes that we might need to make on that.
I know.
The motion made. Bets, we accept the minutes with those additions. Second, Alderman McCoy, on the paper. Number one on our agenda is we have a, got a notice from Larry Walters, who is one of the people that worked with our codes. And we have to have a flood dam and prevention ordinance. And I think all regarders look at it. And the explanation, this is the ordinance that FEMA is requiring to be adopted. It's same except the new one requires that manufactured homes have the bottom of the steel frame elevated two half or above the base flood, where the old one always required them to be elevated two half or above the finish board. This is in line with the new FEMA regulations and the same as recorded pair as already adopted. So.
As far as my comments, I think everything that they said in the articles seem to be in order. So therefore, I would like the motion to be approved, the ordinance, the flooding ordinance that Larry Walters sent from.
This was prefiled.
The prefiled, yeah. So, everything I read through and through, everything seems to be together. Pretty much elaborates on keep the safety of someone who lives in a mobile home and the dudes and adults of it. And from my standpoint, everything looks efficient.
Any questions? Yeah, we need to say something on the motion for prefiled. Second by Alderman Bets, on the paper.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Have with us in the office is Mr. Guy Murray. As many of you know, in just two or three weeks' time, we went from a river that we thought we were going to hack up a little bit. We have had some issues up north with flooding, historic flooding, as we can be exact. However, we don't feel like we've been monitored. We've been monitored here, but we don't feel like we've been danger yet. But you don't know what the Lord send to Morris and Gars to rain and so forth up the country. But I'd like for Guy to elaborate a little bit about some of the procedures that they are already looking at and who he's talking to to keep us informed on the river.
Basically, we're just monitoring the forecast every day. It's updated every day between now and tend to. And that's National Weather Service and the Corps working together. Right now, it projected 175 on the 19th of this month. Doesn't make us pull any triggers as far as any work on the ground or continue watching daily, but not there are some surface strains. We propose to run if we don't do anything, border wells are over there. So we're just going to keep an eye on it until we get back to some normal stage. And update the layers, you know, as they, right now, we had none, I had no concerns from what information I'm getting from the Board of Engineers and the National Weather Service.
Does it kill somebody, question they'd like to ask at this point? All right, thank you. This past week, we opened up bids for the electrical distribution lines for the quarter of the day. And at this time, I'm going to call on, while I get forward our board director to present that.
Well, we opened bids and had a engineer's estimate of $370,000. We had four bids. The low bid, the lowest qualified bid was $200,000, almost $4,000. And Keith, Brian Hamatopis has looked at the bids. That low bid that I mentioned is a qualified or legal bid. And he recommends acceptance as soon as we get the concurrent with the facility plan.
Okay. No questions?
Oh, one question. The money for this is provided under a grant that's already applied, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But there are match funds in there.
We've got match funds that have moved along. And I think the entire amount, and I'll have to refer, yeah. The entire construction amount should go from the state.
Okay. Do we, we need a passed resolution to accept that bid, is that correct?
Yes.
I'll make that.
Getting facility planning. Subjected approval.
I'll make the motion that we accept subject to the approval of facility plan.
Eight by Alderman Doray, second by Alderman McCoy, on the paper. All right, thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have Deborah Most, and she's going to give a financial statement for the market. Is she here? Come in.
I have prepared a summary of the actual revenues and over expenditures for March 31st, 2017. And I have given that to the Alderman and Lomond and department heads so that they can receive the detail and be able to compare it to the actual and to the budget. And then for tonight's meeting, though, I'm going to summarize it so that it's not presenting all the detail. But it is available to anyone that wants to see it at City Hall. But anyway, the general fund has total revenues of $4 million as of March 31st, and it has expenditures of $8 million for a $4 million deficit. Included in that is the construction of the technology building, which has a 60% match from the EDA. And it also includes $2 million that we received from the money that we borrowed back early in the year to pay off some debts from the previous administration. The special revenue fund is showing revenues of $12 million, or 12.5 million revenues, and expenses of $7 million for a surplus of 5.5 million. This fund includes the sales tax fund, the ambulance fund, the hydro fund, the city court, and the hotel occupancy. The largest of those is the hydro loyalty, which has shows $10 million in revenue and $6 million of utility costs. The sales tax fund is also in the special revenue fund, and it's showing 1.7 million revenue versus 72,000 for a surplus of 1.6 million. The debt service fund is just a fund that where we pay our debt, and it's showing principal and interest payments for a deficit of $712,000. The capital projects fund is showing $1.2 million with expenditures of 1.8 for a deficit of $660,000. And in this fund is the, that includes the industrial park and also the port construction The port access fund has revenues of $945,000 and expenses of $890,000. The port construction is 100% funded for the construction, but not for the engineering fees. So, and the IPF, which is the industrial park fund, is showing revenues of $226,000 and expenses of $941,000, which includes the construction of the hotel parking lot, which is not funded. It's 100% paid by the town of Vidalia. The enterprise fund is the utility fund and the convention center. The convention center is showing revenues of $60,000 and expenses of $398,000 for a deficit of $338,000 for the month of March. The utility fund has revenues of 8.9 million in revenues and expenses of 6.8 million for a surplus of $2 million. Overall, we are showing 1.9 million surplus of revenues over expenses. Personnel expenses shows a $3 million decrease over the adopted budget and a total expense of 12 million dollar decrease from the adopted budget. We have a change in the net position as of March 31st of 1.9 million, which is up 6.8 million over the adopted budget. Thank you.
Okay, y'all get all that? Anybody got any questions on the floor from our council?
I did have one question. I noticed when looking at the actuals, that $4.2 million has been transferred out of the hydro fund. Where was that applied?
It goes to the utility department. We have money, the 38 meals, that's calculated by Elizabeth, plus the LIPA money that we receive, that we use in, as necessary, to pay the power costs that we also have to pay LIPA. And it's also paid out of the utility fund. But it is transferred to the utility fund.
And that is separate from the utility cost that's also listed there?
Yes, yes, separate.
Any other questions? All right. Number five on our agenda is public hearing and adoption of sales tax ordinance. And we're going to go into public hearing and have a motion that we enter into public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Both by Alderman Garner.
Aye.
Second by Alderman Doray, on the paper. We're now in public hearing. This is, anytime you have, you pass a sales tax, it's a procedure that you go through. This is the final step in having a hearing in the actual adoption of the sales tax ordinance. This is the sales tax that was reviewed, and thank you very much for that. And if anybody wants an explanation that way to do that, if you have any questions about it, now is the time to do that. Is there any questions from the floor? Any questions from council? Okay, I hear a motion that we.
Moving closer to public hearing.
Moving closer. Public hearing, second by Alderman Garner, on the paper. Motion made by Alderman Bets.
Aye.
Second by Alderman Doray, on the paper. All right. Next on our agenda is a public hearing and adoption of our revised budget for 2017 fiscal year. And we're going to enter into the public hearing on that. Your motion will enter public hearing on that. Alderman McCoy make the motion, second by.
Second.
On the approach, on the paper.
Aye.
Okay, we're now in public hearing on our revised budget, 2017. Again, as I've said in previous times, I feel like we have got a good budget. And I'll be glad to discuss, if anybody here discusses well or asks questions, that will be a good thing to do.
What is the budget being proposed?
The budget being, is basically, that summary sheet right now is showing our fund balance a total increase bill somewhere around 1.5, 1.4 million. Deborah, is that correct? And I can make those available to anybody who wants my data. I mean, we've got detailed copies of each department or each fund that we have. Alderman Doray has requested that we, if y'all want to discuss line item, that's fine. We can do that or any questions that you might have. But we will certainly make these available to you if you want them, for the individual departments, individual, the beauty department, whether it's utilities, enterprise fund, convention center, city hall, we will make it available.
You said the change in that position was 1.45?
Well, what.
It's 1.479, actually.
Yeah.
The what we received on Friday shows 1.9.
No, that was, that was actual.
That's actual.
That was actual, sorry.
The total budget is going to be right there on what projected, it's going to come in somewhere around 1.4, 1.5 million to the top of it.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay, that's okay. I wanted to make sure that I didn't make a mistake.
Is there any questions from the public?
I have a question, boss.
Okay.
And maybe in just an earlier meeting, I don't know, what about the city employees overtime that they've become accustomed to in every paycheck?
Okay.
The city utility department for one, I'm sure, city street transportation?
The only thing that we changed, Beverly, was we were having people that were taken that had personal time and vacation time, they had approved, okay? And what they would do, let's say, for example, someone worked their normal week, and they took off Thursday and Friday. Well, they would put down vacation days, they didn't show up and they just put down vacation days, they were counting those as hours worked. That's against labor law to do that. All we did, all we did was correct that, where someone took personal time and didn't show up for work, they took, they're entitled to personal time or vacation time, it did not get to count as hours worked for that week.
For the overtime, okay.
For the overtime. That presumably happened, y'all see what we're saying? For example, if you worked two days and you worked 24 hours and then you put down vacation days the rest of the week, that would qualify with, that's against state law to do that. And all we did, and this was from our labor attorney, and Deborah invested with them, said that is against law. And that's the reason why we changed it and did it immediately. If we find something that we're doing wrong, we're going to, we're going to make the corrective, you know, means to do that. And that's how it came about.
Thank you.
As far as scheduling or anything else within the departments, that hasn't, that hasn't happened yet. Any other questions?
I would like to make a plea.
Okay.
That all the Aldermen would approve this budget because we are ready to look at another one. And I think it would be wonderful to see five people vote yes.
And I'll, in defense of everything that's going in our town, let me start the process, and not, and Alderman have a chance to speak as well. The budget that we had, that we were given, is without a doubt out of compliance. And I know some people are tired of hearing that, but it is. It was approved, and I'll just read one thing just real quick. Just, the Louisiana Local Government Budget Act mandates that the total of proposed expenditures shall not exceed the total of estimated funds available for the ensuing year. That was approved in violation of that. It's as simple as that. Now, I agree, I wish we could have involved the Aldermen from the city hall standpoint from the get-go on the budget. Because it is, at the end of the day, it's their responsibility to approve it. The mayor recommends a budget, and they have to prove it or make changes to it, whatever they want to do if they're pleased. The budget that we were given and were operating under was approved on June 30th, the day before we took office. There was not a transition for me or our staff. I was handed a key at 6 o'clock or 6:30 the night before we took office. That's when I was able to come in and we started this. So we didn't really have anything to do with anybody. And through, through hard work and everybody involved, and also the Aldermen have been involved as well. And all the, I would like something, just for a minute, everybody who was a department head or director of some, stand up, if you were the town, stand up. If you, if you worked on stood up, or, Billy, I mean, stand up, everybody who worked on this budget, I want you to stand up. All of these people, along with the Aldermen and different kinds of net and gone over line item, thank y'all very much, have gone over line item for our town that we feel like we need to run our town. And I'm just speaking just for an example. The, the old budget had things that were misclassified. The last two accounts left under very serious accusations, charges. And to be honest with you, they just weren't doing their job. And things were out, they were, Deborah came in, played it to me about a month prior to us taking office, maybe a month and a half. And just tell us what you came in, walked into. Just, just tell the people what you walked into, just a little bit. No pressure.
Well, you know, they were just learning their system, and that wasn't the problem. But there were a lot of errors, you know, in the, I really don't know what to say. Just the payroll had problems with this, you know, we were making, tax deposits weren't made on time, so there were some big penalties that were paid during that time.
The penalty was $25,000. So we don't have, we're not doing our job, and we mess up, and it could cost us like that. $25,000 in just one instance cost us that. So it's very important that we have the people, qualified people in place to handle the finances that you found. And I think we've got a great team. Let's go ahead, Deborah.
The health insurance people that were on the health insurance were no longer employed, or maybe they, they weren't even having the proper amount held out for their, their share of the deduction. It's just been lots of numerous things that I had to go in and probably before I could even come up with that budget, which I know it's not a good budget, but it was the best that we could do. I had to go in and try to clean up some of the coding that I could identify with and try to get that straight. And then it was like I needed to get that budget done.
It was probably a process of how many months it took us to really start coming into flood, you know, a better picture of where we were.
Took several months to get that straight and just getting the format fixed up to where we could understand the financials. Because, and then I don't know if y'all could read them very well in the beginning, but I didn't really, and just like the city court, not really understanding how it was set up, and the budget didn't really make sense to me. So, you know, we had to do some cleanup there and get an understanding of how it really worked. Just numerous things.
So needless to say, a lot of work was done. And look, we, this has been a joint effort. This has not been a buzzcraft budget. It has not, and these people will tell you that I have not inflicted my will on telling them what we're going to do. This has been a team effort. We're doing this as a team, and we're doing it with, and being responsible. And I want you to know that anytime that you have any question about your finances, please, I beg you, come see us, come talk to us. But anyway, the Aldermen have been involved as well. They have been instrumental. They've worked very good with their departments. However, I know there's some issues that they might not agree on. You know, I'm asking them tonight to accept this budget so we can start on next year's budget. This next year's budget, I'm required to put in a capital budget so I can tell you what we're planning on building, maybe over the next year, two year, three year, four year. I mean, we want to tell you what we're planning on building. And other things we need to get started on now. So I'm asking, I'm asking them tonight, whatever differences they have with me, I'm begging them tonight, put them away and please come in and be a team. And please come in with a spirit of cooperation that we have nothing to hide. Please come in. We want you to come in being a team, part of the team. If you're coming in and feel like you need to be a watchdog for somebody, you know, that's not, that's not being, that's not being constructive. And I'm just asking, I'm begging the Aldermen to please come be a part of the team, and let's all get this and do this together. I'm just asking that. Any other questions from the floor?
I got a question.
Okay.
Joseph McCoy.
Hey, Jeff.
If this budget gets voted on right now, as far as like, how long does it stay in place?
It will be, well, we don't have.
A full fiscal year?
No, just, just till June 30th.
Just till June 30th?
Wrong. Let that matter.
So, you got to start on June 30th?
We need to be, we need to be working on 2017, 18 budget as we speak. Now, I know.
I can say from speaking, June 30th, if it doesn't get voted in by then, we get fines with the state?
There's not fines involved, but you are out of statute, and I don't know what our ramifications would be from that. And I've heard some people say that you might not qualify for funding if you're not something. And I haven't been able to prove that, Dominic, but, you know, something that I hope we don't have to worry with. I just hope that, the balance, the budget we're presenting is balanced. Now, another thing that I wanted to explain with this budget is that this has been a process, that as we have actual expenditures, as we go through, that we modify and go in, adjust this budget. It's a working budget as we go, because this is our first year, we're going to have our first year that we're adjusting as we go. And we feel like we're going to be almost right on the, you know, pretty doggone close to hitting to what we feel like, what we were projecting. It's not going to be right on the money, you can't do it. It's a budget, it's a guideline. It's not absolute. And I'm just, I think that we're going to do that, but we need to adopt it so we can start on the other. And again, I'm asking everybody to be involved in it and come in as a team, and let's roll up our sleeves and do the work of our town. Anyway, thank you, that's a good question. Anyone else?
I'm going to say one more thing. I think Ms. Mo should be complimented because she came into a big, big responsibility.
She did.
And we appreciate you, I want you to be.
Keep it. No one else? I hear a motion, we can close the public hearing. Motion made by Alderman Garner.
Aye.
Second by Alderman Bets, on the paper.
Aye.
Okay, now, discussion. Do I hear a motion?
Motion motion approved.
Motion made by Alderman Bets to approve the proposal in this budget.
Aye.
That was a motion. Well, at this second, we go into discussion. Motion made by Alderman Bets, second by Alderman Garner, on the paper.
Discussion.
Trying to sneak one in. Now, we go into discussion.
I didn't get the vote on that one.
They're going to. No, we didn't, we didn't. We're in discussion. We're in discussion.
You're going to discuss first.
Before they vote, before the vote.
Oh, okay.
Need a vote, you need a vote count on that, don't you?
No, no, we got a motion to approve and a second.
A second, but we don't have a vote.
Now's time to discuss. Now's time to discuss.
They're taking votes.
Why is it not discussed?
We might. Take a vote. Go ahead, the other discussion.
Since, since the beginning, I've asked for more time so we can see actual persons compared. And based on what we, what I got Friday, we're finding out more of the actuals. We found a tremendous amount of money Friday that was, it didn't fall out of the sky, it misplaced somewhere and showed up. And based on giving you more time. And based on giving you more time, I guess you're ready to write that down, you're ready to write that down. And to approve the budget with being uncomfortable, having to do it again in two weeks, to start working on the new in two weeks, you want to approve this tonight and have to do another one?
I, I think I read what we're up against. We are out of, we're not, we're not in compliance with budget, with the budget acts, the legislative budget, we're out of compliance with it. Okay, I'm just, I'm saying, yes, I'm asking to approve because this is a balanced budget will put us in compliance with the budget, you know, budget act.
Well, the three other times you mentioned, you said it was balanced and it's good, then you found, as you went along with the vote, you found more problems and you fixed the problems.
As, as we, as we actually go through and have more actual, yes, you're absolutely right. And, and it might be different by the time we get to the end at three more, at the end of June 30th. It might, it's going to be a little different.
So the timeframe is good, it's matched.
I agree. So are y'all, are y'all okay with, are y'all okay with being out of compliance with, with the budget act?
My, my, my question, the time gave you, the, the time to find out more, gave you enough to be more accurate than what you're doing.
I'm, I'm just going to, I'm just going to throw this out to, to, how, how much more accurate can we be than what we can be? Now, there's no way you can predict what-
There's really only, there's really no way of knowing, but the five hundred thousand that you're referring to has to do with the actuals. It didn't have anything to do with the budget. It didn't change the budget at all. What happened was, where there is a manual process that we go through, when we did entries, okay, in the email, and that's what I did, is tried to explain that to you, but it did not affect the budget. It just made us more in line with where we were proposing in our proposed budget, where our revenues would be. And that way, it helps us, or me, to be able to do a review of the financials and be able to discover when something's not in line. For a couple of months, I was watching that revenue from the utility department and I was thinking, oh, we're not going to make this, you know, I've got to find out why. So I went back in and did some research and saw that my account's receivable was not where it was supposed to be in line with the, uh, utility department, because they keep a receivable, because they have two separate systems. So I knew we had a problem, so I had to go and research to find out what the problem was. And that's when I found out that there was a portion of the, um, the fuel adjustment that was not being picked up in revenue on the financial side. It wasn't, um, I mean, we're constantly reconciling and reviewing the financials and doing other things. It's not the primary job that I do is look at the financial statements, so, or the, the details. So there's, it's just a balancing act of trying to get it all done, but it didn't have anything to do with the budget. And I can only say one other thing about the budget, if it means anything to anybody else, is that using the budget that was adopted to go forward and to looking at this year's is like not having a budget at all. And I've told Buzz that too. That's why we're just proposing that we have something that we can use, that we have gone through and analyzed it with Sabrina's help. She's, you know, looking for, to see that we can make it through the remaining three months of the year to be able to come up with a projection. And if it is anywhere close to one point eight million dollars either way, then we're within the compliance that we have to be for a finding at the end of the year. So we don't have that finding whenever Sala Simmons comes in and tries, and, you know, looks at our books to look at the budget compared to the actual.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions?
Within the actuals of our budget, there's about twelve million dollars that is being transferred between the departments. Now, I understand that transfers are a normal function of the budget and are expected. For example, when you have a department that's, you know, perhaps not producing enough revenue to cover the expenses, whereas not a revenue-producing department at all, it's expected that, that, you know, that transfers into that department are a norm, has to be done. Um, one of the things that I have spoken with Mayor Kraft about, and, and he told me in person that he would add in, and he was quoting the paper saying he would add in, would be those transfers. And I believe that for transparency, while I understand your statement that it does not change the overall budget in and of itself, it's money that's already in the budget that is being shifted to cover expenditures. It does not change the budget. But when we talk about transparency and we're looking through these actuals and we're seeing these large transfers, again, over twelve million dollars are coming in and out of various departments, I personally feel like, although it is not required that it be in the budget, that it would help with transparency of the budget. So that there's no big question mark, as I had when I saw that four point two million dollar transfer from the hydro fund. You know, it wasn't an accusation of any wrongdoing, it was just a question. So that is why I do feel that those transfers, it would be beneficial for us to include those in the budget as they have always been. In the adopted budget that we're operating under now, transfers in and out of departments are already included. In each of the proposed budgets, which we're working on version number four, we've only officially printed number, proposed three, but we have seen four, they have been removed. Um, and like I said, Mayor Kraft did say that he has no problem adding those into the budget. Another issue that, that I have in this proposed budget, the capital outlay has been removed from the police department. Under the adopted budget, the former chief had almost a hundred and four thousand dollars in capital outlay. Chief Merrill suggested that the amount be decreased. He did not think he needed a hundred and four thousand dollars in his capital outlay, but he did request that we maintain at least fifty thousand dollars. So that if he needed to, you know, he has a car involved in an accident or, or whatever the reason, he can replace that car without having to come back before the board for approval each time. And I felt, and it was included in the previous versions of the budget, you know, fifty thousand was in there, I felt like that was an adequate amount for him since he was taking a decrease. Now, in this proposed budget, that has been removed and not requested to be removed by our chief. It was removed from the budget. Now, agenda item number seven, the chief is going to be requesting or seeking approval to purchase a vehicle to replace the vehicle that was lost in a, in a store. Therefore, since he is going to be spending capital outlay in this fiscal year, I believe that at least the fifty thousand that he originally requested and did not request to be removed to be added back in. So based on those two statements, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proposed budget with the two corrections that I've stated. We add in the transfers, which the mayor has agreed to do, and we add the capital outlay back into the police department budget as requested by Chief Merrill.
Transfers are there, Sabrina, I don't know what you're talking about.
In the proposed budget?
Mm-hmm. On four twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, one point four million, it's right there. I put the actuals that were coming from the actual, um, financial statements.
If I'm looking at general and admin, because if I'm wrong, I won't, I wouldn't admit it in public. If I'm looking at general admin under proposed two thousand seventeen and transfers in and out, there's nothing here. However, the balance as of three thirty-one does show transfers, but under the proposed budget, there's nothing that-
Well, this is, you're looking at the budget to actual comparison, which is, um, I'm not using that as the budget. The budget is, is this document here, and I sent both of those to you. But those are, the transfers are included in the budget that we're trying to propose.
In each and every department?
Well, I, the general fund, it's, I have, I've always summarized it into the general fund, I'm breaking it out between each of those. And then, um, so, and then each of the other funds have their own transfers in and outs. It's just the general fund that I didn't split it out among the different departments.
Just an explanation again of what, what they're talking about. Is, is, again, I explained last time, you're in fund accounting, but, but the municipality, it's not like a debit and credit like those normal business. You have fund, that's how, you don't have a, assets and liabilities and you have capital in a business. This is fund accounting. But anyway, within the town, for example, city hall does not generate, you know, any income other than maybe some fees or so forth. So to, to fund the expenses of city hall or salaries or anything like that, you've got to have, you have your enterprise funds which produce income, okay? What to cover, to keep everything, keep those funds in balance. For example, when they do a payroll, they might transfer money out of your enterprise fund, or the utility fund, it could be electric, gas, water, whatever, and it's, it's a, it's an equal transfer out of the utility fund and equal going into city hall. It's to account for the, the fund itself. Take another one and put another, and they balance. The only reason I removed them, because it's kind of, when people were looking at all the transfers, by the time you get to the end of the year, they're, they're big numbers. I mean, they're, and that's fine. I have no problem putting them in. I've, I'm not trying to hide anything or pull anything off over on anybody.
And that's because it's not accusatory.
The budget is what it is. I mean, it's not, it was just, some people were confused about those big numbers and all it was, they balanced. You have money going out, you have money coming in, and they balance, is all that is. I mean, it's just an accounting thing. We'll put them in there, I have no problem with it. There's, there's no issue with it, that's fine. I have no, now, speaking of that, because I think there has been some, some questions, and I just want to clear one thing off, as far as the administration and the general administration budget. Been requested that would we, you know, could we reduce, you know, some of these things? And I think an arbitrary number been thrown out, well, in personnel expenses under administration, I think it's been requested for us to reduce it eleven percent, thirteen percent. If you look at the budget, we've reduced it thirty-five percent.
So I put a-
Can I ask that question? Go ahead, you keep going or not?
I put a motion on the table to approve adding those to-
Well, I like that question about the vehicle being replaced. Is that a truck or car, or which, which vehicle got in the storm damage?
That's going to come up on the next item, I don't know, we're going to give a full explanation.
We'll come up with that. That's been, we got, we need, all right, so we, we got a motion on the floor and we've got discussion. Do you want to amend your motion? Do we need, we have a motion on the floor and have discussion, and now we have another motion.
Do you have your second?
We have a motion and a second, I'm on the first motion. On the first one, but Alderman Dory is offering that-
An amendment.
To-
An amendment to the original motion.
So the original motion, we need to go back to the original motion and have it changed. So we can vote on it.
I think you vote on, on the amendment first. Get a second and vote on whether you want an amendment or not, and then go back.
Do we have a second for our Alderman Dory's motion?
I see your motion.
Second, made by Alderman Gardner. Any more discussion? All in favor of her amending the propos, the proposed amended budget? All right, all in favor.
Now we go back to the floor and the original amendment. The original motion as amended. Now, what's on the floor is the original motion to approve as amended.
I put the amendment to approve as amended. So I'll make that motion. Right? I need a second.
Just call a question?
Yeah.
The motion's there, the second's there, it's, it's been approved to amend it, so you just need to vote on it as amended.
Okay. All right, we'll start at the end of the table. Alderman Dory, this is to approve the amended, the proposed budget with the amended, amended as she has.
Yes.
Okay, I'll start at this end of the table.
Yes.
Alderman Dory, I say yes. Alderman McCoy?
Yes.
Alderman McCoy, I say yes. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Broke? Thank you. Okay. Now we'll get, now we'll get to item number seven. And I will, I will call, I'm, I'm going to call Police Chief Merrill to make his request on, on purchase of a vehicle and just-
Both of you get to stand up so we can hear them when they sit down with Chief Merrill.
Can I ask a question? If you have amended it to put the money in there, does he still need to, I mean, just a question.
At this point, he may not need to vote, you know, get more approvals, but if he'd like to, just as long-
Uh, the vehicle we got is two thousand seven, got a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Started to give us a lot of problems. Uh, this year, we hadn't bought, bought any vehicles since I took office. We sold two motorcycles for thirty-six thousand. We had a vehicle that was involved in an incident that we had, a storm that was nine thousand, ninety-eight hundred dollars insurance money, got back on it. Uh, we sold a Tahoe for forty-five hundred and a Crown vehicle, I think eight, eight hundred. And, uh, I'm just a question, buying a, a new vehicle to replace the truck that we have already with that moving miles on.
All in total, with all of the monies that the police department has received for the storm damage, the insurance and for the sale of vehicles, you have forty-nine thousand fifty dollars. And you said that you found a brand-new vehicle under state contract for twenty-five thousand. So there's no board approval that's there.
Question I got is, that money that he had in his department that was, he put in general fund instead of putting back in his department, is that, I would think, is that money should go back into his department if he sells something out of his department instead of being put into the general fund?
David, how did we, how did we account for those sales? Did, how were those monies handled?
They went into the general fund, but the police department gives credit for it, so it should be in there of-
You got it noted as far as that is his, that's his funds in his budget?
Yes.
Because it's just like the fire department just sold ambulance, where's that money?
That's one of the ambulance funds.
Documented as fire department funds?
Uh, it'll be ambulance. I feel sure, and I'm not certain, I got a chance.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
I think it just happens.
So my question is, so he also gets the, he gets the forty-nine, um, five or whatever, and he also gets the fifty that was stated earlier, or?
No, 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 the fifty thousand will now be put into the budget, um, and that forty-nine thousand was just to explain that he has kind of gotten that money through the sale of, of items, so this is not something that is going to be an extra expenditure. He's actually kind of ahead of the game with this.
Okay. All right, let's move on to number eight. The utility department's street department requests to advertise sale of certain vehicles and accept sale bids for June to two thousand seventeen town meeting. Any questions on that? And if anybody would like an explanation of what we're selling, I'll go ahead and run it down real quick. The street department is going to be putting up a bid, two thousand six Ford F three fifty bid, a nineteen ninety-seven Ford F two fifty, a ninety-four Chevrolet pickup. The utility department is going to be putting up a nineteen ninety-six forty-seven hundred international, uh, two-wheel drive. Mark, what is that? Is that a?
I got a bucket truck, a dairy truck, and a duck truck. And, uh, they all crab and run, they all wear off.
Okay. Those will be going up for bid, if anybody's interested on those.
They might, they get all the lot, I'm all.
And now, did you put, y'all, did y'all put any minimal bids on some of these?
Yeah.
I've got those, there are some minimal bids on these, so it'll be-
It's going to be in the paper.
Okay, it will be advertised. Okay.
Mayor, we need all of the session from the board to advertise.
Motion made by Alderman Best, safer by Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. What can we do with that? All right, next on our agenda, application of occupational license. Uh, first one, want the corporation ice cream sales? This is a federal- This is a federal...
Is that the, that your ice cream thing?
It's usually, a lot of times I've seen it parked out in front of places, the apartments across from Walmart, like on the shoulder of the road.
In connection with Walmart.
You're wrong.
That's not him.
You're wrong, you're wrong. This guy, he is, uh, has a van, um, very professionally marked, um, he is in several, uh, the municipalities that we serve as, uh, subject select for, um, very upper board. Um, he's gonna do exactly like the guy that already runs around in the green van. He's gonna be selling.
Okay, we can figure out who's got the trailer, and who won't do that.
It's happening on the highway, with the lack of trailers, falls off, and still, right there.
Can I hear most weeks here?
I make that motion.
Okay, by Alderman Dory, second?
Second.
Alderman Brooks on the favor?
Alright.
Now, I know I saw Mr. Banks with his army.
I did.
Right there, you wanna tell us a little bit about Unique Billing Service?
Sure. Good evening. To Mayor Craft, Alderman, Alderman Woman, my name is Aldemis Banks, and we are opening a unique billing service company. Me and my partner Elizabeth Morgan, who cannot be here tonight, because she is assisting some students from the Louisiana Technical College right now, who are in school for medical billing and coding. And what it is, is the state has a program now where they are offering, uh, unique billing and service classes, coding classes, to at least ten students in the area, they'll pay for them. Uh, the Louisiana Technical College has a curriculum now, where they can go to school, and they come, and they can do an externship through a medical billing and coding company. After that, they can go through an apprenticeship program, and then we can either hire them on with us, or they can go out and look for a job. So, we came, it came to our mind that maybe we should open up a medical billing and coding company and assist these students in Vidalia. It would open jobs in Vidalia, it would open job training in Vidalia, job placement, and we're trying to keep everything in our community, so that we can have these facilities for them. Now, with the state and our facility here, if we get, if we get those students, we can house them, we can do everything in one place, is what I'm trying to say. We can, um, help them with the resources that they need to get to the technical college, with the information that they need to get the grants. Uh, this grant also helps them with childcare, it helps them with, uh, transportation back and forth to school, and it helps them with, um, job placement in other areas if they don't want to stay with us. So, we want to open that part of it for that reason. The call center part of it is going to be open for students who don't want to do medical billing and coding. Maybe they want to, they experience, and customer service, um, answering service, anything. But we contracted through a company called Arise, who will give us contracts, so that we can place these students at our call center and do these jobs for them. They will receive training through us, uh, pass out a little brochure, this is it. Uh, I just did this at home, just to give you an overview of some of the services that we will provide, um, outside of that, like communication skills, the job placement, the training, um, after-school programs, computer skills. We want to offer all of that, so that we can have our community job-ready, and they can be competitive when, you know, when they go out and look for these jobs. Um, trying to get everything in one breath here, be quick. You can also go on our website, it's unikemedicalbillingplus.com. The website is out there, and our email address is unik billingplus@gmail.com. My phone number is on this as well, if y'all have any questions, have anyone who would like to go through the training process of becoming a medical, uh, billing coder, and they have any questions for me? We're here.
Aldemis is one of, Aldemis is a lifetime resident of Vidalia, come through our school system, and everybody's proud of you, Aldemis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's fantastic.
Most will make it Alderman Gardner?
Second.
Lady Alderman Brooks on the favor?
Alright.
Next, I'm gonna have, uh, our planning commission gonna have recommendation for the council to consider.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I talk long, but can I sit down? The planning commission, we have been working on some, something. It's been a learning experience. I want to thank our city employees for their assistance, because we asked a lot of questions, and we got a lot of help, we got a whole notebook pulling up. The planning commission of the city of Vidalia recommends the following to be amended to the zoning and development code, to allow conditional approval of manufactured homes on individualized and residential area R eight. And those conditions, some of y'all may have gotten these. Those conditions are, manufactured homes would have to have been there before. Now, if you got a great big old subdivision, no, you cannot, the subdivision homes are a hundred thousand, you got a two-hundred thousand dollar manufactured home, no, you cannot go in that subdivision. Manufactured homes would have to have been there before. Empty lots must have had a manufactured home on it in the past, and it should have been there in, in the two years. You can't say it was not one there thirty-six years ago. The manufactured home must be no older than ten years old. If you're trying to be a city on the move, that looks good. It should be professionally skirted to screen the undercarriage assembly. The skirting and exterior condition should match the exterior finish of the unit. That way, it doesn't look like Mardi Gras, and now that I have anything against Mardi Gras. It must be occupied and have city utilities. And the reason we say that, because it was brought to our attention by one of our, uh, committee members, that we have some abandoned manufactured homes. So, we want our city to look good, so if you have a manufactured home, it must be occupied, and you must have city utilities connected to it. That way, you know you're gonna keep it up. Moving a one manufactured home and replacing it with another one that has been upgraded can be done, pending on the approval from the building inspector for the city of Vidalia. Manufactured home being placed on a lot has to be a vast improvement from the one being removed. That's also pending on the approval from the building inspector from the city of Vidalia. Those are recommendations that we have from the planning commission of the city.
Okay, that's recommendations from the, that's a recommendation from the planning committee, um...
I'm also, we approved the amended, the zoning and development code, to allow the conditions approved of the manufactured homes on the individual ones, as she stated earlier, under those conditions.
Do you have a minimal size lot, like fifty by a hundred, thirty?
It's strictly, uh, bill, if it's wherever, if there, if, if there's a mobile home on it now, or has been within two years, there can be one placed on it. If it is not, if, if there's not been a mobile home on it within the past two years, you cannot put a mobile, it's not even conditional for the mobile, so...
Booth, can I say, if your R eight district is eight thousand square feet or less long, that's the district, but there still has to be these conditions and conditions being in that district.
That's a good question. Alderman Gardner made a motion.
When, when you're talking about must be approved by the building inspector, it's my understanding, and, and you've done a lot of research on this, so correct me if I'm wrong, but there are some state statutes and state codes and requirements, will those be adhered to by the building inspector, such as a pad, you know, under the mobile home with a grade on it? Um, permanent steps affixed to the mobile home and things such as that? Are those gonna be individually listed?
Building has to.
Okay, he will conform to all make up...
The major that all of those things, other than where they should be. Because the city inspector probably tops the state inspector on that.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Second, Alderman Betts, any more time? Well, any payment can recommend it, if it's the F S and the F board have to approve it, you know, they will recommend that yes, they can, they can make a, uh, a recommendation to accept it, and they look at those conditions, and then the building inspector look at it, and I would think that... I would think if it's not approved, your, your approval now based on those conditions with the inspector, it wouldn't have to come back.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't the inspector get the approval and make sure that they apply? And he pleases all of that?
Yes, he would, he makes all the...
So, they wouldn't have to go to the planning.
Pardon?
They wouldn't have to go and visit the planning commission.
Well, they're setting what the conditions are, and those conditions have to be, and that inspector would have to make that. And this, this is somebody's independent now, the city today, I want everybody to know that. This man licensed and bonded, and, and he's a professional charges for his services. And, and that's something that, you know, he would do to be under his professional services. And we definitely can make sure that all of our, our zoning ordinances and, and conditions are followed.
Booth, also, also bring us a question, state requirements apply as well.
My question is, on rental property, they rent it out, you said it has to be occupied, so it stays vacant for a year, nobody wants to rent it, what's, what's gonna take place at that point? Uh, we have people that have rental houses in Vidalia that are disposable, and you can talk to people in the town who have them, and they're bad, and a trailer can get bad real quick, that's right. My question is, what if it's a rental trailer, and it stays vacant, because nobody wants to rent it?
What happens is, if it becomes dilapidated and at a point where blight takes over, that's what we're gonna do with rental property as it is now?
But, my question is, that's the problem, we got a lot of it already, and we can't deal with that alone. Now, we're gonna put a trailer in place, which will even get worse quicker than it happened. That's my question. How can you tell me that you're not gonna have that happen? Because that's not a good thing, and we got enough of that already, that we can't handle. And people are calling me about properties that are, the roof, I got one right by me, roof coming off of, bushes growing up in the back of it, can't get anybody to do nothing about it, because they own it, and we can't say anything to them. Now, give me an answer to that, and I might consider, but I need to, I need an answer for that question.
You, you're gonna run that, in my opinion, Tom, you're gonna run that rest, no matter what works or what... Over home, all, all this is, is doing is setting these conditions, that somebody's gonna come in, because if they're existing now, if there ain't nothing you can do about it, unless it's a blighted property, or, and you can get, make sure everybody cut the grass and all that, we're doing a better job on that. And also, by the way, thank y'all for permitting, because now we can fight the blight. We have, now that we have the money and the... We, uh, the money will be available, we can start working on some of these unsightly houses, and also buildings along Carter Street, so just stay tuned, so, but anyway, back to Alderman Brooks's question. I would think that if some, something is gonna be used, that that would be a condition, that they would have to have somebody ready to come into it and occupy it, before they could get approval.
Could that be put in this whole bid, to be where if it's not occupied at a certain time? Because I got one across the street, y'all, that's one.
That's one of the conditions, must be occupied, there it is.
And that's what I'm saying, who's gonna enforce that? That's my question.
The building inspector would have to verify their actual, not even...
I'm sorry, that's a traditional site-built home, you know what I mean? It, that's a traditional site-built home that's crossed from here. And, I mean, I understand the concern that's going on within the city, but, and, and initially, just for all honesty, when I first heard this, my instant reaction was, okay. But then I started thinking, I mean, who are we to say that you have to live in a site-built home? Who are we to say that? We can't be the kind of, you know, snobs in Vidalia that says, you can't live here if you can't conform to our standards of site-built homes. So, I mean, I'm in agreement of, of passing this and getting this in place, so we can start replacing this.
Wait, see, I was talking about the blighted homes and all this other stuff, and they have been reported, it's been reported to the city, it's been reported to the board, these homes that you have children that are living in, that are full of black mold, and they are rental properties, but nothing is done to those people that own those properties, because they say, well, it's rented out, it's not our responsibility. That is false, and nobody is doing anything to make those landlords take care of that property. And you worrying about somebody putting in a new trailer and renting it out, or living in it? Worry about what we got right now, Tom, worry about what we got right now. We got children that are, are being sick, am I right? We were, we were discussing manufactured homes.
Exactly, rental property. Alright, both, I'm, I'm being...
You make the motion, John, second.
We got a motion on the floor.
In a second.
In a second.
In a second. Favor.
All in favor.
And if you're saying, man, wait, you're not getting harassed, and I don't appreciate it.
I know, who's harassing? You've been harassing citizens since you got up there.
Number eleven on our, number eleven on our agenda, on our, please, you all, please. In our, in our new, uh, our code book, it requires on our, uh, Board of Adjustments that we have five members, the old ordinance requested seven, but the new, uh, code calls for five. We only have four, and tonight, I would like to make a recommendation, with the pleasure of Council, the new Council, the new ordinance does state that the Board of Alders selects this person, and if they want to, to table this, and then amongst themselves come up with somebody to serve on this, I did visit with someone who used to visit and be on this, uh, Board of Adjustments and work, his name is Floyd Gardner, and, and I was just gonna pick him up to board. He, I talked with him, he would be willing to serve if the Council's okay with that. If not, we would, you know, I would table it, and tell, if y'all wanna make a selection yourself, because it does stay in that code, that the Board of Alders make that selection. I would like to hear what y'all think.
I agree.
I agree.
Alright, we'll, we'll table the appointment of the one member to the Board of Adjustments. Okay.
Could I just say something, he's my neighbor, and he is one of the most Christian men. He helps everybody in my neighborhood, anybody that's in need, and he is a very good worker. He knows construction, and I would like to say Floyd is a candidate, if you would consider.
I think so, too. Okay, now we're gonna do a, uh, on our IT Center, there's an update on that, it's, I'm gonna ask, uh, is Bobby here tonight? Okay, Bobby Paul is our IT Director, and I would like him to give you an update on the IT Center.
I can give you an update on the IT Center, but, uh, not on the advisory committee, because I don't really know a whole lot about that.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with that, just a second.
On the IT Center, we're waiting on network connection to be able to install our phones and internet. We have the furniture in place for the, uh, incubator, we have, uh, cubicle walls, we're waiting on some brackets to be able to attach those to get the actual cubicles for the incubator built. Uh, we've installed the racks for our fiber management system, and pretty much we're waiting on, we gotta have internet to be able to have internet and phones. got to have internet to be able to have internet and phones in the building now. There, there was a couple of things we have left to get done. There's a contractor, one of us with the air conditioning in Manhattan, they've got that worked out. There's a, just a problem with getting the units to cycle properly, but that's all fixed now and we hope to be, and I would hope to have our network connection, I had hoped to have it last week. If you're not, if you will not see this week, it'll probably be next week.
Okay. Thank you, Bobby. You did a good job. Also, the, uh, in the, in the agreement that, Heather, would you like to address about the Advisory Committee, which I, is, we've come up with and also I've, I've appointed some members and basically it was in the, the way it was written that an advisory committee would have some responsibility. Do you want to take a sample of that as part of them?
Yes, so the, um, Advisory Committee would be over the, um, technology incubator. So they would receive the applications of those that would like to go into the incubator for space and they would review them to be sure, you know, that they complied with our guidelines and they would help and serve as mentors for those residents as they move through the program. Um, so we, um, would like to, you know, try to have a representative from, you know, various, um, professional service sectors such as an attorney, a CPA, um, um, somebody in marketing and advertising, you know, the different aspects of a business so they can, you know, receive some proper education and mentorship as they move through the program.
And we, when we've done that and we've got a list of nine people to be on that committee and it doesn't require any kind of approval, this is just for information, on that, Anna Junkin, Heather Malone, Stephen Dawkins, Martin Miller, Damon Smith, Tents Hughes, Ricky Knapp, Jay Gemberry of both builders and as ex officio, we have Heather Urida and Lena Nader. So that's just so we can start involving them in the process of getting some things set up for the incubator and also the IT Center itself. That's, that's for information there, so. All right. There were two, I don't remember 13 consideration of the approval of the Muni Code recommendations. Uh, Bill, would you like to say anything at this point?
I really would rather let the alderman, I guess I can say this and I've met with some of the aldermen about it, talked to some of the aldermen, almost talked to everybody, I think. What, what's being done and Bobby, correct me if I say something that's not just right, okay? The company has made Muni Codes and the, our ordinances were sent to them during the past administration to be reviewed for compliance with state laws and federal laws and to question things they saw that may or may not be right or may, may need to be looked at wording wise or so forth. And the whole idea is, is to get our ordinances in shape so they can be put online so any citizen anytime if they have a question in their mind or something comes up, they could review the city ordinances on their own, online, they're up, they'll be updated as ordinances are amended or as new ordinances are passed. And at this point, if somebody wants an ordinance about a certain particular subject, they come to City Hall and tell us and it's, it's, we may be able to find it right away, we may have to do some research, it depends on the language of what they're asking for, we have to, we have to search for it, we find it, make copy, that's fine. We'll eliminate the cumbersomeness of that. It will also, as Alderman Dory and I, Dory and I were talking about, to me, it's a good thing if a citizen looks at it, it's just like these public comments that are made and they, they see something they question, that's more eyes looking at something to see if it's, if the county, if it's really good for the city or not good for the city. So it's not all a bad thing. It's just to get us up to current operational standards. Now, what was presented to the alderman was a draft that had been, it's not the first draft, the second draft, the third, it's, it's a draft after it's been looked at by every department head, by the chief of police, the fire chief and all, all of us to, to see what they're suggesting, what looks good to us, what doesn't look good to us. We didn't make wholesale changes, we can't, they have to be modified by y'all. The, the suggestions they made were compliance suggestions. What we need to do, hopefully we can do tonight, is approve them as they are. Now, that doesn't mean that they're, that everything's correct about them or you're going to agree with everything in there about them, but you wouldn't if you looked at ordinances anywhere. So it does give you an opportunity to, to now, it would, go online and read them, scroll, scroll through them and study them as aldermen or as citizens and see if you think, see things you want to make a motion to amend ordinances such and such or discuss about it and even further bring them up to snuff. We've taken the, uh, the fees out of the ordinances, that's a suggestion they had and we felt was a good one. All the fees that are in every ordinance right now, if you leave them in the ordinances and you need to adjust a fee, change a fee, you got to revise the ordinance. We're going to put a fee schedule so that you can, it says refer to fee schedule instead of having a fee in the ordinance. You can update the fee schedule every year or however often you decide to do it, rather than having to go back and look through every ordinance to find out what a fee is for everything and change a whole, an ordinance, go through that process. So that's kind of what it is. It's, it's a tool for us, the majority of the money was paid before we came in, I think, I don't remember, we got what, $1,200 something like?
Sixteen.
$1,600 left to pay on a about $8,000 fee and this month is the deadline.
And there is a residual cost, I understand as well?
There is a $20 a page, if I remember right. If, if a new ordinance goes in or modifications made, there's a $20 per page for them to make those changes or add those new ordinances, thank you.
And there's a month, oh, there's an annual?
Yeah, there's a year.
Three hundred, what is it? Three seventy?
Something, something like.
It's not a, three hundred and something dollars. It's not a lot of money.
That's for them to maintain our documents on their server so that we can get to it.
So just to make sure that I, that I understood, what you're wanting us to do right now is just to adopt the Muni Codes with the ordinances as is with no changes being made?
No, well, we're asking you to adopt what we sent you to review.
Okay, which does include changes to ordinances?
It does and, and that's why we sent them for you to review. It makes changes that bring, it's up to y'all. You can, you can adopt ordinances like they are and you can go through page by page of what we gave you and come back and make your own amendments that will change all of us. We hope that if you saw something glaring that you wanted to do that with, you might do it tonight, make this change, that change, but, but in lieu of that, to have reviewed it so that you say, yeah, bringing this up to state standard or federal standard, whatever, we, we didn't do anything that, um, made any changes that affect anybody's life. You know, it's more if, if the wording of something was not constitutional, we would make, we, they suggested constitutional language, that's all, those kind of things, not the crux or the, or the implementation or anything like that. We didn't make anything that affected what the law, how the law performed in somebody's life. It was more just compliance changes. So we're asking, either way, really, we would, it'd be nice to go ahead and take it like it is and you can always amend back or do, you know what I mean? Or if you, if you're not comfortable with that, like they are, I don't know what that happens with Muni Code with that.
If, uh, if they're not.
We're going to have a lot of ordinances still out of compliance if you do, that's, that's the only concern I've got, but either way.
The, the only question I have regarding and, and, you know me, I read everything.
I'm glad.
You know, one of the things that, that I'm concerned about is whether or not it follows the proper protocol and procedure for changing an ordinance, which does require that we have a public hearing and a notification of changes. So if we were to adopt this with the changes, um, would we be out of, you know?
I think John might be able to, John has told me that other municipalities have followed this process, is that right, John?
Yes.
So it, it's been, it's not, there's, we're not setting a precedent or doing anything.
Right.
That hadn't been done and approved before.
Does this code what you can and cannot build or is this just utility codes or?
This is all.
All, all the.
Well, I mean, I think that we talked about trying to sell trailers and we couldn't. I don't know if you can't sell heavy equipment. A lot of things you can't do that I tried, you know, that, that, we talk about the same thing?
Well, what, what the Muni Codes are and I kind of mentioned it in an, in an email to Mayor Craft and all this, what they are is just really a searchable database for all laws that we have, all ordinances that we have. And it puts it online so that if you have a question about whether or not it's legal for you to sell something, you know, what, exactly what you're talking about, you can go to the website, do a keyword search and it pulls up all ordinances.
That refer to.
That refer to whatever it is you have a question about.
Yeah, well, I asked about these ordinances, Bill, on the, you know, it's going to be mobile homes, if they can only sell them in, in the industrial park.
Right.
But now that's not, that's, that's a.
Is that the same thing we talked about?
That's a zoning code.
Yeah, that's a zoning code, which is already online.
Okay. We're going to change those, they changed some of those because there's some stuff, can't sell tractors, you can't sell anything. But John Dirckley wants to come, surely he wants to.
Now, now Steve, you can't, but you can, you can get a variance. You can ask for a variance with, to the, you can, you can come, there's a process. There has to be something put in place as a guideline, that's what the code is, zoning code is.
Who do you go to to get that done?
Board of Adjustments. They would, they would look at it, review it, any kind of requests, they would look at everything that's involved in it and they would meet. Now, the Board of Adjustments is required to actually advertise and have two weeks' notice, have a public hearing on any kind of adjustment they're going to do, so it would involve the public that, that would do that. Unlike the planning commission, the planning commission is just like us, council, we just got 24 hours of notice, but the Board of Adjustments, since it is something that could change ordinance, does require public participation, it requires advertising in your, in your public journal, it wouldn't be something, somebody would slip in on you for sure, but any kind of change like that would have to go before them and it would be public hearing and looked at and presented.
Sabrina can ask you a question?
Absolutely.
In reading every page, were there things that you felt?
I didn't see anything that was egregious. I, I didn't see any changes that would, in my opinion, affect my neighborhood, but what my concern actually is not, you know, is not for myself, is for that one person who it may affect. And, and as I said, I didn't see anything that, that I thought was just glaring or I, or I would have, you know, mentioned it, but I just, I think my fear in, in passing it with all of these changes without giving the public the opportunity to see those changes, to know what those changes are, is that we don't really know if it will affect even just one person. And doing it this way, in my opinion, circumvents their right to that public hearing and for public comment on any ordinance changes. And I think that's the only thing that I have question or pause about, um, is that, you know, we kind of owed it to the residents of Vidalia to give them that right to speak on it.
All right, and here's the other side of that coin. If you, if it's presented to them in a form that they can look at it.
Right.
And they can study it, whether the changes, after the changes are made and they have issues, it can always be amended. Right now, for them to review it is an almost, it's an impossibility so much. So that's the whole, that's what the biggest purpose of this is to put it in a format and online and it's available for the people to be able to see and, and peruse and subside. And if they see things that affect them, they come to y'all and say, this, and if y'all decide, sorry, it's the best thing for everybody, or you decide no. Somewhere you got to have that, to me, it's a, it's a chicken and egg whichever way. It ends up being the same thing. I think if it's approved and put online and the people are told, please go look, please pay attention, anytime you have something come up that you want to do or you're interested in, pay attention to what the laws are and how they affect you. These are now up to standard with the state laws and the federal laws and we're not, not out of, we're not unconstitutional, things like that. And I, I know there may be one or two things that you may have issues with as a board, but again, you can review it and you can change it and even now, the way it is, you're probably in jeopardy of a whole lot more of that happening with the way it is. And I know that's not making things perfect, but it is, I think it's a move to, to, toward better.
Absolutely, and, and like I said, I mean, I, I need some Muni Codes back in office. So I think it's, it's great that we have them, I think it's necessary for us to kind of advance in technology and get people.
And I think your question is well mounted and proper, I just think that this process will help that.
And what's the deadline?
May 31st, what is it, May 31st? We're there.
Just to be clear, um, if it's not approved by May 31st, all monies that have been spent thus far are lost.
Is that right, Bobby?
Yep.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I got one. It's, it's just, it's just the way that everybody can look at the ordinance, but they still have to come and go the old fashioned way as far as changing or amending.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
There's no difference to the process.
It just puts the laws.
And if it's determined by Muni Code that one of our ordinances, because of a newly passed federal or state law, is out of compliance, they won't change it, they will notify us and we, it's still, the board still goes through the process of change.
That's correct.
I've been listening, I, my opinion is we should, we should adopt this, we should get it approved and like you said, a good question, good dialogue, I agree, but my, my opinion is I think we should go ahead and adopt it and then deal with those changes and just be, couple up with them as they come or anything that is troublesome or.
And actually, my guess is you're going to have, if people start looking, you're probably going to have more requested changes that weren't from the changes, but yet were from things that are already there, that's my guess.
But again, that's just my recommendation.
I'll make a motion, will you, Doc?
Second.
President, all in favor? All right. Uh, Alderman Dory had come to me and wanted to discuss the different departments and I will defer to her discussion.
Um, within our budget, there are several departments, funds and sections and some of these have clearly defined department heads. With the police department, you have an elected chief of police, the fire department has an appointed fire chief, city court has an elected judge, street sanitation has a board voted department head, as does the utility department. All other sections of the budget have no specific classification nor a specifically named department and these sections make up a large portion of the budget. I believe that the recreation department, the IT department and the convention center should have named department heads and alderman liaisons assigned to those, just as the other departments have. The mayor's opinion when I spoke to him is that these departments don't have enough employees to require a department head to be named, um, but these sections within the budget, two of which are already defined in the budget as departments, um, do have substantial expenditures that could benefit from having an alderman liaison. And I also feel that City Hall should have a named department head. Historically, this has always been the case. In July, the mayor did not recommend a department head for City Hall and I would like to see that reinstated going forward. So I'm asking the board to consider, actually, I'm sorry, this is not a consideration of the board, this is, um, this is a function of the mayor himself, I'm asking the mayor to consider, um, those departments which I mentioned, having department heads assigned to those.
I will address that, I will consider, however, my, my, my feeling now is, for example, the convention center has got three employees, has got a director, rec department's got three, three employees, director, and they're not, they're not a big department like we have with fire department or police department or utilities or street sanitation. Those require someone to be in charge of the processes of handling those, those funds. If the purpose was anything other than, I mean, we can appoint liaisons to the. If the purpose was anything other than, I mean, we can appoint liaisons to the convention center or the recreation, we can, you know, I really feel like we can do that without having to go and go through all the bureaucracy of creating a department. You have to create a department by ordinance, it has to be a written recommendation on me completely outlined and spelling out those things which, you know, at this time, I'm just not willing to do. However, I will consider, I will consider and look into it, but my feeling right now is it really doesn't change anything as far as, you know, budgeting and looking over it. You know, as an Alderman, you'd like to be over or be a liaison, and we stood as that when we go, when we can list the recreation department and say, who's the liaison, we don't have to name any person, it's just like city hall, who that could be, just currently John Betts, and you can just call it city hall. And so, to me, without that, I will consider and look into it. Also, I haven't had a chance to look at what other municipalities do with that in regards, but everybody I've talked to, is when you have a department that's got a lot of people, you've got to have that extra help, that person who is there and directing those people and their daily activities and giving them out, you know, on the road and doing what they're supposed to do. And these other departments are small, and we're in constant, you know, communication on a daily basis and what their responsibilities are. So that's just where I'm at on it, so. But it's a good question, I will consider.
So that means that Regina would be the department head?
She's the director of the convention center.
That means you're the department head and director.
That's correct. That's correct. Okay. Any other?
Okay, number 15, I'm on the first Alderman Dory, which is discussing Memorial Day parade.
Most people know that this is a traditional historical parade that has been going on in the city for about 151 years now. We want to continue for this celebration, to continue to go on, it starts on, they know you're speaking, it closes all the way to the bridge to the national cemetery about 8:00 AM on Monday, May the 29th. We have ran into a few bumps in the road, but we are going to get through them. I've been working diligently with Chief Julie Mara and the mayor as well. In a couple of weeks or so, you're supposed to see some repairs and construction work going on with the old bridge, so it's going to be actually closed for about a year. So that kind of sort of dappered us in our normal traditional march. But I have suggested back in '86, two years before I was, two years after I was born, that when you only have one bridge, you still march, so why can't you still march now? So like I said, we are making arrangements and going through to make sure we are meeting criterias, all policies and procedures where this 151st memorial tradition will still take place and go on. Today, being that said, at the beginning of my term, I decided that I wanted to go within our community and acknowledge hard-working and dedicated people who have did service in multiple ways. So far, I've already given out several awards, and I'm back again. I try to, in honor of this young man here, I try to name a street after him for his 45 years of dedicated service. Let me just tell you a little something about this young man I'm talking about. I'm saying, young man, I think he'll appreciate me saying it, because he probably could go mow more grass and cut more than I can. Seventy-five-year-old Gregory, seventy-five-year-old Gregory from Concordia Parish Training School in Videllian in 1962, entered the air force in 1963, serving four years in the air force and another year in Vietnam. He is a native of Videllian, he has been employed in Videllian Junior High for over 34 years, and has been a city patrolman for 45. He was hired as the first black officer in the city in 1971. He was given one rule, different from the other four officers of the hour. He could not arrest any white man. He worked with the city's recreation department, district number three, he worked with the baseball, softball, tee ball, ladies softball, and neighborhood watch for elders of the community. He worked days and nights trying to steer area children away from his chiefies within the area. Mr. Ferguson is married to Mary F. Ferguson. He has one daughter, Rhonda, two granddaughters, Candy and Chisney, one great daughter, Chisney Williams. He's also a member of Union Baptist Church. So that being furthermore said, if Mr. Charlie Ferguson will come up, he will be there.
I would like to say Charlie has been a very good influence on not only people in the community, but also children, and everywhere he goes, he takes positive influence in our community. And if our children are even getting close to the character that Charlie has exemplified in our town, we're going to have a great future ahead of us. Now, back to the parade. I want to, yesterday, the two representatives of Mississippi Department of Transportation, one from Lilligen and Department of Transportation, came and held, laid out that they were fixing the bridge. They're fixing to replace pins that are very important and need to be replaced on our old bridge and make it safer, and also at the same time, they want to repaint it. Now, to do that, they are going to try to do it all at one time rather than making two projects. And I wondered, and I found out, why they left the barriers in that road in between the bridges was because this project has been in place for several years, and they didn't want to do that because they were, this was in their trade to do. So they left those there. However, after this project, those will be removed, by the way. So that will make things more attractive and fair to be gone, we can go back and put green space there, things of that nature. However, now, Alderman Dory was in city hall yesterday and visiting with us and checking on the parade. And since it was, they're going to close that bridge, they're going to have their contractor meetings in two weeks. And now, I do not know the timing of when they're going to close the old bridge, but they are under the gun to complete this project, have it done and replaced and painted in a year, 365 days. They cannot go over that, or they're going to be given penalties. Now, they stated, and this is them saying, that it's illegal to close that bridge and have any kind of parade on it. That's all they said. They said it has happened in the past, but I'm here to say that the city of the day has never, ever said, yeah, close the bridge, we don't have that authority. I don't have that authority to say, close the bridge. We don't have, I don't have that. I support the parade, I want to let that be known, and I support the parade, anything that you do to have it, I hope that happens, and I hope I could be here participating. I just want you to know, the city of the day cannot take the liability to tell Director Police Chief and tell him, go close that bridge. We cannot do that, we do not have that authority. So, I'm just saying to the people to organize another parade, we want to see it happen. Call whoever you need to, but please, the city of the day will not be the one recommending to close the bridge, we cannot do that. And so, it's not...
I'm sorry, but we, Alderman Cora asked me today, I talked with him a little bit, he asked me to see what I could do, just to call people. I've called Blastex Project Supervisor, I did not get through to him, but I left a message for him to call. Blastex is the company that has a contract on the old bridge. We don't know yet how we can facilitate the parade, and we do want to do everything we can without doing something we don't have authority to do, to have the parade happen. I grew up here, started before I was born, but I can remember watching the parade early, some of my first memories, so it means a lot to the day, to the history of the day, and the ongoing history of the day. And that's the way I'm going to portray it to them. The DOT, Mississippi DOT, says they can't affect traffic flow on the bridge. So, that means you can't go stop traffic to have the parade on the new bridge, especially with the old one closed. So we're not sure about all this, but my hope is, and it was Alderman Cora suggesting, and I agreed, that we find out if they've closed the old bridge, but they hadn't actually, they're not working on Memorial Day, there's liability, so we're going to have an issue probably, but will they allow them to walk across the old bridge? So that's the hope we got right now, but I don't, I'm not sure.
I want to say something about that. During my time on police department, what we did, we had to call the DOT to get the cone to come, to put on the bridge. Once we put the bridge, once we put the cone on the bridge, they're going to let the vehicle know that it's going to be a march on the bridge, the way I did it. I was always in front of the parade, okay, I kept my guys on that side. The traffic cannot stop moving, it has to move. That's it all on that. But you can march on it, be that side. Once I get all my people on one side, get keep them from traveling, cross, the traffic will float, plus we can have people out front get help with the traffic.
The bridge is shut down, it'll be the...
It'll be too long.
It'll be east and west, right?
Yeah, it's a few years. It's still going to be, it's still going to be too long, but you will have enough space for cars on that side to go across.
I mean, I wonder if we can shut down the entirety of car traffic, both ways, to have the road to Memorial, operate in circle.
It's not even an hour, maybe 15 minutes to 30 minutes.
Just add clarity to Mr. Ferguson. Both east and west traffic is going to be shut, if that was an idea on that bridge, both east and west traffic. And we were hoping, as I spoke with Bill earlier today, that if they would allow foot traffic on the new bridge, on the one that they're not working on, on Memorial Day, that we could go across, I doubt they'll be working on Memorial Day, and the 30 minutes that it takes for us to get across, the foot traffic should not affect anything else going on. And that's why I asked him to reach out to...
That's why, that's what I'm going to ask him, that very question.
All right, now here, motion rejected.
I made the motion, then at the next meeting, we have that air.
They turned it on.